Log that has not yet been categorized. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to C one right sizing discussion, Dr.
Team.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. I'll kick it off. We've seen what we're really focused on, which is properly resource schools and we had hours of discussion with so many community members last week. I think that was a great event for all of us. And everyone knows the summary of the briefings we've had, plus the multiple town or community conversation events. And I'll hand off to Sven to talk about capacity of gaining schools.
So in this slide, we have some information that we haven't provided any of you so far. And it is starting off with Baxter Elementary, there's a capacity of 436 students at Baxter. And those students would be moving to Chester Valley, 17 students would move to Chester Valley. That moves their capacity from 64% to 71%. College, the 90 students to College Gate would raise the College Gate capacity from 70% to 90%. And the 53 students to scenic park would raise the capacity from 77% to 87%. Moving to Bear Valley, the Bear Valley School is a capacity of 461. When 121 students at Huffman or move to Huffman, that has that school moving from 63% to 93%. The 104 to Robert Creek actually moves those that school from 62 to 88. And the 80 to O'Malley raises the capacity from 79% to 97% at O'Malley. Looking at Fire Lake, that wanting to see more data. Wanting to make sure that program considerations were taken, issue concerns to and from the the schools that their students would be moving to. Some questions answered. Had the community feeling encouraged having so many ASD staff and board members at community sessions. And I'll tell you, there's actually statements, written statements about the appreciation of board members being there to answer questions. Community felt heard and listened to at the sessions and the community appreciated the data presented regarding rezoning and consolidation. I'll pass it back to Jim for the next part.
Okay. Let me give a quick update. There was a lot of discussion at not just the emails to the school board, but at the community conversations about before and after school programs. So I thought it was important enough to lay out what's at the schools currently and what's at the schools where they would be going. And where you see a shortfall, obviously, it's something that we can now engage with the community and try to make sure that once the board does make their final decisions, that we remain focused on students as part of prepping for reception at those schools. So you can see, well, you may not know that almost all of these programs, YMCA and others are just after school programs and not before and after, with very few exceptions at Bear Valley where they do offer both before and after care as well as this is their first year as a pilot pre K program at the school. So I'll give you a minute to look for Fire Lake on this slide is the only one really not directly impacted in a negative way is they have no programs currently at the school. And on the next slide, you'll see the last four. And again, for Nunaca Valley, they're really going from no programs to the potential for some programs at Chester Valley. And at Willow, YMCA has intended to put an after school program. They're just being challenged along with us and everyone else in the community with staffing this year.
All right, when we go into looking at some more information that we wanted to share with the board in regards to this right sizing plan, looking at additional feedback and analysis, we wanted to kind of bring up some things that we've thought and we've heard because we have gone out to all of the schools and talked to all of the staff. We've gone now to we've gone through six community conversations as well as the the meetings with the MECA, CAC, NAC and Title One Advisory Committees. And so we kind of broke this down into the different things of concerns and some ideas that we wanted to bring up with you as additional information. For Baxter Elementary, the concerns really focused around the enrollment and staffing of the school. And as a year three closure and really being concerned about being able to keep the building staffed and and maybe students actually and families deciding to move on, knowing that the school is a year three closure. So that was the biggest concern we heard from that that community. Bear Valley Elementary School, we've heard a lot of concerns, some things that we also didn't know. And that's kind of why we actually do these community conversations is of course, to be able to learn from the community, what's going on in your in your school community. The Bear Valley Community Association, we learned provides before during as a pre K and after school programs to the school. And they have shared some plans for expansion that we had, we did not know about prior to Bear Valley being selected. Another area that the Bear Valley Community brought up is the area around transportation concerns. Up in that area and how long it would take their kids to be bused to the new schools and some of the cases. In Fire Lake, we also had real concerns around the enrollment and staffing of the school being a year two school. That came from the staff out there. And there's some concerns around the curricular concerns. We heard from a handful of parents around. My student might be a fourth grader next year. And if they're moving into Birchwood, how would that work? And how would they make sure they're caught up and actually blending right into that special curriculum in that school. Lakewood. Of course, it's the lowest of our enrollment schools. And the concern that we have there, and we've actually through the analysis, we and Pam will talk about this a little bit later, we even though we've we've briefed that the SBBS program was going to go to Northwood, we've actually needed to change that recommendation and actually looking at Turnigan as the school for that program. Moving on, Nunaca Valley is again, any of the two and three year recommended recommendations have concerns about staffing and and what happens to their enrollment that second or third year. And the big questions around the future of that school is what is a pre case center? And what does that really mean? And then Tudor Elementary, we actually have some things come up there that are we have some concerning programmatic concerns, definitely around staffing for the Montessori program. We are, we have, right now, we have two long term substitutes at that school. This is the second set of long term substitutes for them in the Montessori program. We don't feel like the curriculum is being able to be taught with fidelity. We have some big concerns around that program at that school. There's patient there and kind of what that would, what that would look like. And we heard from a number of families that live in the neighborhood whose kids go to the Montessori program that they would not probably be able to or something, some cases be wanting to move their students from the Montessori program at Tudor to the Montessori program at Alley. And if, say, all those students were to want to stay in a neighborhood school, we would not have enough room in Lake Otis. So we've been I've been briefing that. We've been looking into and analyzing what can we do to fix that situation? And we're currently looking at Cassoon as an option, even though Cassoon was a receiving school at the last. Go around with this from Abbott Loop, we still have a lot of capacity at Cassoon and there is and is pretty close to where some of the students live in the Tudor Tudor area. Moving on to Wonder Park, some concerns there were around the movement of special education programs and making sure we transition kids effectively from that program. And just with the open concept design, many of those programs just don't work with that open concept. And then we have heard quite a lot from the East Side Community concerns about the number of schools that were recommended on the east side of Anchorage. And I know that many of you have heard from some people from from that community as well. So those are, those are kind of the big areas. And I don't know if Jim or Dr. Brian, if you had other that you'd like to bring up there on that, but those are kind of the concerns that we have specifically to each one of the schools as we've gone through all these listening sessions. Okay. And so now we, we wanted to go through and allow Pam Mominy, our Senior Director of Special Education to give you an update as to with, with this right sizing, we talk a lot about these special programs and stuff. And what does that look like as a, as a full programmatic change?
Thank you, Sven. Good afternoon, Board Members and Dr. Bryant. Like Sven said, I'm Pam Mominy. I'm the Senior Director of Special Education Instruction. This first slide here, I'm here to talk about the right sizing effects on special education and some of the programmatic moves for our students with disabilities. On this first slide, these are year one schools. You can see Bear Valley, Lakewood and Tudor all have resource programs. In the Anchorage School District, resource programming is offered at all of our schools. And so for those students who access services in resource, they will be transitioning to the same schools as their Gen Ed peers. Wherever they fall within the boundaries. The special program that I would like to highlight that is affected in this year, in this potential move is Lakewood, they have what's called the School Based Behavior Supports Program, also known as SBBS. And as Sven said earlier, we had initially planned for the SBBS program to move from Lakewood to Northwood Elementary. However, as we continue to conduct analysis of the school size, space available and other programs that are already within Northwood. We've determined that there is just not enough space for the three classrooms that would be required for the SBBS program to successfully fit into Northwood. Based on the options of where Lakewood students will be going, Turnigan Elementary was the other option. By keeping them within the same schools as their Gen Ed peers, that provides equity for students as well as allows students to stay with their siblings. We have a lot of siblings that attend the same schools as their brothers and sisters who are in special programs. And that will allow them to continue riding the same bus and accessing the same school as their siblings. The next slide talks about the year two schools. We have Fire Lake, Nunaca Valley and Wonder Park. Again, I will focus on the special programs. So on line two, we have structured learning classroom, the SLC program over at Fire Lake. And those students would be transitioning to one of the options as their Gen Ed peers, which is Eagle River Elementary. We recognize the importance of offering a location in the Eagle River Chugiak area to help students remain with their community. We also have other special programs in the Eagle River Chugiak area that are already housed at some of those schools such as Life Skills and our SBBS program over at Homestead and Birchwood respectively. So Eagle River was a good option. They have the space. And again, that is one of the schools where the Gen Ed students will be transitioning to as well. The other school on the last line item there is Wonder Park in their SLC program. Now you can see two schools are identified as potential sites for those students to transition to. Should this plan go into effect? We have Mountain View Elementary and Chester Valley Elementary. The reason we've identified both schools is because we have students who are regionally placed over at Wonder Park who are in two different middle school feeder zones. And we have aimed to keep students with their neighborhood friends and their neighborhood peers so that they can grow with them to middle school and high school. So students who are currently at Wonder Park, who would be going to Mountain View, their middle school has been identified as Clark. And students at Wonder Park who will be going to Chester Valley, their middle school has been identified as baggage. And on this last slide, we have Baxter. This is one of our identified year three schools. Baxter has one of our largest structured learning classroom programs in the district for elementary schools. And you can see there are two schools that have been identified for the same reasons that I just stated for Wonder Park. We have Rogers Park Elementary. So students at Baxter who are zoned for Wendler Middle School, when they reach that age, will be going to Rogers Park. And we have students who attend Baxter who are zoned for baggage when they reach middle school, who would be going to Chester Valley with their peers.
So tonight's work session was kind of designed to be more open discussion with the board so we could give feedback, thoughts about which direction the board's leaning on schools. At, at some point by December 3rd, we will have a non-action item in front of the school board. Typically, the last couple of years, we had something for finance for the budget on a Saturday type work session. We are assuming something similar like that would occur. And that would be a good time to give final guidance by moving stuff around the board as to what was would remain on the list or off the list. Obviously, that could happen anytime between now and then as well. So I didn't know if, I think this is probably the best slide for discussion purposes. And then any questions you have, we have a lot of staff behind us who have spent hundreds of hours looking at schools from every different way. And of course, we can call people up as needed.
We'll start with questions. Thank you, Dr. Bryant and team for the presentation, Member Bellamy.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on this slide, it's missing the current capacity of the schools, right? This is the overall school capacity, but the current capacity is on the previous slides, right?
If you look at just the upper left at Chester Valley, their current capacity is 64%. And they'll jump to 71%.
Oh, okay. That's how we're reading it. Okay, that makes sense. I do have a question regarding that's come to me several times regarding when we were calculating or looking at the low birth rates of town. Was there any consideration of grandparents who are not of childbearing age, but are raising their grandkids?
So the American Community Survey, which the U.S. Census Bureau puts out, doesn't really care how old the parents are or the guardians. It only tracks the zero to four year olds in those geographic areas. What it wouldn't be able to account for is if there are guardians on a different part of town from where the parents and the child goes back and forth. I don't know if a census survey would track that. I think they could only get one address. So when you looked at the Census Bureau data, the very lowest rate you could get was zero to 2%. That meant zero to 2% of the entire population in that area was zero to four years old.
Children born in that area.
Right.
Wherever they, wherever they live.
And there were summaries that were green and that was anywhere up to almost 25% of the total population was young children, zero to four. So that was kind of the spread was 25 all the way down to very, very close to zero, depending on where in town those houses are located.
Okay, that's helpful because I, that question, it was a surprising one. But we do have a lot of grandparents who are raising their kids. And they, so the question is, was that a consideration? Would that have? Would that have? If we captured the data, would it have made a difference? And we may not know.
So I think one flaw in any type of public survey is did everyone take it?
Yeah.
You know, we have people working two jobs and may or may not have been home when the survey came by. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why surveys are never going to be 100%. There was a lot of subjective feedback about they knew a neighbor who just moved in with three kids. And of course, we see that, we see it all the time. But you know, really Anchorage overall has declined, enrollment has declined. And we do recognize that there are people moving in with children all the time. There are also obviously kids growing up and people moving out. But we really haven't seen an increased growth rate in Anchorage.
Thank you, Member Bellamy. Just for our record, Member Lessons joined us at 3:03 PM and Member Donley joined us at 3:11 PM. I'm just going to ask a quick follow up question that I saw Member Lessons have her hand up. We talked about Tudor and assumptions regarding the Montessori program. What? What assumptions are made calculating the occupancy rate after the move? For Lake Otis to get it to 97%, are we assuming that 100% of the Montessori students will move to Denali? Or are we baking in some sort of assumption that some of the Montessori students go to Lake Otis?
On, on this slide, the assumption is that all, all of the Montessori kids would go to Denali. So that the 97% is only including the students that are in the neighborhood program.
Okay. And I think, I mean, I don't think it's going on a limb to say that that's doesn't reflect reality. We just don't know what number to actually put there, correct? Okay. And then should the entire program be moved to? Which, which school were we talking about? Sorry, there was an alternate school that was one of the receiving schools for Abbott Loop. Cassoon. Okay. What, what does that take their occupancy to compared to where it is now?
So we have, we have, we still have to go and do the walk on that school specifically because we do believe we could house a lot of students there. I don't, I'm not prepared this evening, just because this is still working. I mean, we're still analyzing all morning this morning. What I would say is that we don't necessarily have to send 100% to that school to Cassoon. We can look at splitting like we do with other schools and have some go to Lake Otis and some go to Cassoon. But we haven't we, we just, this is, we've been analyzing, we've been working on this and we're just at that point. By the third, we'll definitely have a recommendation for that.
Yeah. No, and I was online with you folks. I mean, you guys were working till after eight o'clock last night. So I figured some of the work remains incomplete. I just wanted to flag that we, that's still an open question on Lake Otis likely would be above capacity with the plan currently constructed.
We do believe that there's more capacity available at Cassoon than there is at Lake Otis.
Okay. Appreciate that. Member Lessons, then we'll go to President Holman.
Thanks. This is a question that I'm trying to capture what folks have asked me about our general process. And what I've shared is that, you know, with any given memo that comes in front of the board, whether it's about a roof contract or anything, you know, a board, board members can, you know, vote to approve, you know, reject it or vote to amend. And so at the end of the day, I'm assuming that that is what we would be empowered to do on December 17th. Yes, no, or amend. My question really is about process, and that's a reflection of my having been to the in-person conversations all last week. And what I, what I felt that I heard was that during this in-between window, the administration is taking feedback and you've shared some of that here, which I appreciate. Do you, does the administration expect to revise its recommendation in any way before bringing a memo to the board, a non-action item?
I, I think like we did two years ago when we did the budget exercise on Saturday. And honestly, it could happen at any board meeting between now and then, assuming we do that again. We waited until after the board. Of course, they're never held to a thumbs up or a thumbs down. It's merely guidance until an actual vote is taken. But if prior to the 17th, the board indicates their desire to downsize this list and in some form, either a board meeting or, or or a Saturday session, then at that point, it would be expected that we would provide a recommendation that the board is expecting as opposed to a recommendation that the board has clearly indicated that's not what they're expecting. So I don't, I don't think it's I think it would be inappropriate for the administration to start removing schools at this point. I think it's really the board's direction and guidance to remove schools unless the board were to come back and tell the superintendent that you wanted him to look at what schools would, would he remove? I mean, but at this point, we recommended a list. We're going to continue providing updates. And at some point, the board will, will decide that it's time for them to modify or not. And, and we'll naturally provide what you expect to get on the 17th, if there seems to be four or more votes.
I have a follow-up, Member Lessons.
Okay, that's helpful. I think that a I guess my follow-up question would be if the intent, well, I think there are multiple intents with the right sizing process. They should generally focus on improved student outcomes at the end of the day in alignment with our adopted board goals. If board members signal opposition to any of the schools on that list, does the administration have a need or desire for? It's got to be seven schools because of, you know, percentage of the district.
You know, when we did the analysis, we picked the number of schools that we thought was possible in a multi-year plan. We we knew that boards have very difficult decisions. We see it all over the U.S. We've seen it throughout Alaska. We didn't plan on adding new, new schools to the list. Although if four or more board members wanted to, naturally, that, that could occur. You know, I, I think all of us know that there may be one individual board member that wants a school off a list or on a list, but we, we typically go by four or more. I think we have to, pretty sure. And so it really is at any time that the board will will signal that a school or schools would no longer be considered and I we would comply with that, that would be expected. It wouldn't prevent another board member from bringing up an amendment on December 17th or some future date, adding a school back. I mean, that, that's how amendments work, but at least, you know, I would, I would anticipate providing a memo of recommendations that the board has told us they expect to receive.
Thank you, Member Lessons. I'll just get an interject a quick follow-up before we go to President Holman on this point and this thread of conversation specifically. I, I think it was my expectation before hearing that response, Mr. Anderson, that the board would be receiving a memo that reflected administration's current position, given all the additional information administration gleaned from the community conversation process. If we are freezing the memo in time at the, at the moment the schools listed were introduced and then not incorporating that feedback administrations gleaned and conversations that frankly, you've had, Mr. Gusterson's had, that I haven't hit the benefit of participating in. To me, that seems like an inefficient process. And so I would hope that the memorandum that's presented for non-action reflects and stands by all the additional information that administrations received. If that means that no changes are made, I completely understand and will, as a single board member, I'll take that up with consideration, but to, to not incorporate that and to any item addressed and introduced on 12-3 to me seems like we could potentially be have, have a better process. So just want to share that. President Holman, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. This is a follow-up to what Vice President Jacobs asked. Looking at Tudor Elementary, because the, the Montessori is a specific program, I'm wondering if we have the ability to send a targeted email to the parent. I'm wondering if we have the ability to send a targeted email to the parents in the Montessori program. Uh, basically trying to get a feeling for how many of them think they, they like the program so much they would transport their kids to Denali. Um, versus how many wouldn't. It, it seems to me like, given the fact it's a, it's a separate program, we might be able to do that. And I have a follow-up after an answer.
Uh, to President Hallman, I, you know, we, I believe we could probably send that, that out. Um, if that's going to be a way to determine how many, uh, parents are going to decide their students stay in the Montessori program out of the neighborhood. Um, students that live in the neighborhood, um, we, we could definitely do that. Um, I don't think that that would be too hard to do.
I'm, I'm thinking that could be really useful to get an idea of, of whether we're looking at like ninety percent uh, going to Denali or maybe twenty percent. And that, that's certainly going to have a, a pretty big bearing on the impact of, to Lake Otis. Um, given how close to, to capacity they're going to come. Uh, the other one's more complicated. At Fire Lake, uh, I had a number of parents express concerns about students. Um, being sent to Birchwood. And as we all know, our A B C programs have excellent outcomes. Uh, but, but it really works when it's students that do well in that kind of a program. Um, they felt like for a lot of kids, it wouldn't be right in the same way that an open optional program is not right for certain kids, but wonderful for others. I know, or I'm, I'm thinking that's probably a harder group to ferret out. Can, can we identify the families of the forty students that would be sent to Birchwood? Um, and contact them to get a, a feel for how many feel like that'd be good for their student? Or, or how many would feel compelled to find some other way, some other location for their kids to, to go to school?
You know, I think we could do that. I mean, we know the forty that, um, live in that area. We can identify them and we can reach out and ask, ask them that. Um, we did some analysis about Fire, Fire Lake, uh, our senior director for that area, Patrick Freeman. When looked at all the students that are at Fire Lake, not at Fire Lake, at Birchwood and those people, those students that live in the Birchwood area and go to other schools. And what, what he found was that a predominant numbers families stay in the Birchwood area, something like a hundred and sixty-four of the students that live in Birchwood area go to school at Birchwood. And of the ones that don't, um, they're all going to special programs such as Eagle Academy or Eagle River Open Optional. Um, or immersion at Chuyac. And, um, in the last two years of the students that started at Birchwood, they haven't had any transfer out of Birchwood. So, um, Birchwood is a good program. I know it's different. Um, we can definitely look into that, you know, and we've done, um, things of moving boundaries and stuff in the past. Um, stu, the families always have the opportunity to laud her into other programs. Um, if it doesn't match their, their families or their students, um, needs. One question that did come up, and if I could just add on to your, to the answer here. Um, one question that did come up was at, at, at the community conversations that I got was, you know, my student has been in a regular school through third grade. How will my student fare in an A B C school in fourth grade? Um, transferring in, and my answer to that has always been, we always have kids move into the Birchwood area and they start later in their career and they succeed. And that's because we have amazing teachers teaching and they catch kids up. So, um, just to answer, I guess, to kind of conclude this answer, we can definitely reach out to those forty students. Um, President Hallman, and, uh, we can gather that information.
Okay. Thank you very much. That'd be helpful. And yeah, I, you know, it's a great program. The results speak for themselves. Uh, it's just a matter of, um, some parents looking at the, the personality for their kids and not feeling like A B C is the, the right choice. But, uh, yeah, if, if we could get the feedback from the affected families, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, President Hallman. We'll move on to member Wilson.
Like, I have a couple of questions, um, actually that I got from the community conversations about Tudor Elementary. Uh, do we know how many of the Tudor Montessori program students are neighborhood students?
I believe it's ninety-six.
Ninety-six, okay. So about
I, I believe.
Of those students.
We have, over the past couple of years, we've actually had the principal reach out to neighborhood kindergarten, first grade students, families, and see if they would be interested in moving over to Montessori because their class sizes were much smaller in that program. So it makes sense that there's more from the neighborhood in that program.
Okay. And then, um, follow-up is a question I received from actually a, a a parent is Tudor is much further down the list on the rubric than other schools. At, why is Tudor not being considered as a receiving school instead of a school being considered for closure versus schools that were higher up on the list? Was a question that I received.
I think it was, it, it's probably around, there was already a special program there. And it's hard to add a second special program in a neighborhood school, all in the same school. Um, if you were to add another program into that. Right? I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Okay, thank you, member Wilson. Uh, member Higgins.
I, I can clarify just a bit more. So when the board goal guardrail said to make sure we keep programs intact. Um, and you wanted to bring in another hundred and fifty-plus kids into Tudor, would that push out the, um, Montessori kids? Or would you just, in not knowing how the Montessori program was, was going to evolve? Um, it, it seemed pretty risky that we would now bring something in and not allow the Montessori program as a special program, either to exist at its current size or, or to expand if it could. So we really did look at the schools in that area. And, and it was, you know, Lake Otis was over strength, but you know, Tudor couldn't have absorbed all of Lake Otis. And it's really looking at schools in a circle. The rubric really just kind of narrowed things down. So you could say, well, let's not look at every single school. Um, because it's still hundreds of hours of staff effort. It was to narrow it down and we did focus in on making sure we retain that Montessori program and not push it out.
Good member Wilson, thank you, Mr. Anderson, member Higgins.
Oh, me, I'm sorry. Um, uh, first of all, I'll say that I attended Tudor Montessori and, and when they asked the issues, questions about those in the Mon, I mean, the P T A. Um, the ones that were living in the community that seemed to be the most of the ones showed up for this particular meeting. They all said they can't do the transportation and that's a big issue for them. So that means they would be out of it and that puts us, uh, over the max in Lake Otis and it's a pretty high number. And then you've got the legislature up here supposedly number one, it costs a balanced budget. Number two, they claim that they're, that the caucus is really focused on additional funding, trying to deal with lowering classroom sizes and that's gonna make it real difficult when you're over capacity. So we're in that category. I am interested in the issue of Fire Lake though, because the forty, those people that would fall into Birchwood, if they want to opt out to go to a regular school, is transportation's on them because they won't be in that school. And so they're really going to be forced into that or provide transportation. That's going to make it a tough situation for them. And there seems to be, from what I saw and heard from parents, opposition to that. There's a real concern that, that A B C is not popular with everybody. It doesn't get good results, I, you know, doing the right thing. But it's parental choices not to go to a, not to be offered the opportunity to go to a regular elementary school is a, is for them a big problem. And that's a concern that they have, uh, within that. I thought I'd share that.
You know, I, I did consider that when you, when you look at the number of kids on, on here. Um, it adds up to somewhere close to twelve hundred kids being impacted. But there's also four hundred additional kids that are, um, zoned out from somewhere else that go to many of these same schools. So, you know, at the end of the day, when you're looking at forty kids versus, you know, really larger numbers at many of these schools where parents are going to have to make decisions as to whether they really wanted to go to that school or go to a different school. I think as long as we retain parental choice. Um, then trying to make everything be down to zero is never going to happen. I think, you know, I, I think we can reach out to, to these families and find out how large that number is that's concerned and work with them, but, but really forty out of twelve hundred is, is not a significant bump that um, I, I think would put a, a plan for a school completely off the table.
Yeah, member Donley, you have any questions at this time? Okay, thank you much. I'm gonna jump in with, um, one of my own. Um, we've talked about improved academic outcomes as a part of this conversation and utilized, uh, the students who were formerly, um, attendees of Abbott Loop as an example. And we've mentioned that, uh, academic outcomes related to standardized testing have gone up for those students. Is there any specific data we can reference? Or is there, not to do a deep dive on it, but is there additional context we can share, uh, to reference as the board has conversations and that topic comes up?
I'd like to pull Chris Opitz up here, our Senior Director of Assessment Evaluation to, I know he's been looking at that and could probably answer a lot better than I could.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just repeat the question?
Sure. Um, so we've, we've referenced a couple of times at community conversations, um, that we have been both optimistic and then, um, happy to share that academic outcomes for students who formally attended Abbott Loop Elementary, um, at their receiving schools, um, have demonstrated academic growth related standardized testing scores. And so I guess I was hoping for more insight as to what that looks like and where that, those students trend in comparison to overall district trends. Thanks.
Sure. Um, thank you for the question. So we, when we looked at that data, we looked at just some of the key metrics, not all of them, of course. So we looked at, um, MAP, both, uh, math and reading, M-class and attendance as the key metrics, um, that we tracked for the cohort, um, from Abbott Loop. And so what we did is we took those kiddos, um, from Abbott Loop. And of course, we have one year's worth of data at this point. So at the, we looked at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three and we compared it to the end of last year, twenty-four. And what we saw was, uh, in, in, in MAP, reading and math, we saw that that particular cohort's achievement level did increase marginally. Um, it's a, the kid's attendance rate on aver, all of these are based on averages, of course, right? And so there may be discrepancies student by student. Um, their attendance rate also increased, um, year over year. And the M-class data held steady. And so one of the things I would just really, um, emphasize is that we would never, um, um, suggest that the, there, there's some sort of causation or it's a good thing, but really what we were looking for is sort of red flags. Um, that, that might suggest, hey, there's something going on here that we'd want to look more deeply at. Um, but what we can say is that on average, we did not see any, um, significant, uh, decreases in performance that would cause us major concern.
But I also would, I would like to just add though, that there is increases and the attendance rate did go up more, pretty, pretty, pretty substantially. And, uh, as far as the, you know, when you look at these types of things and implementation dips usually happen, and in this case it did not with this group, that's why we consider that a pretty big success, because they did succeed.
Okay. Um, that's helpful. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm gonna, um, ask one additional question, then we'll move on to, um, another round. Uh, for those who have additional questions and thank you, Mr. Opitz. Appreciate that. Um, we've talked about how consolidation can address things like large or reduced class size bubbles. Um, and availability of specialists, reduce travel time for specialists. I was hopeful we could give maybe a real world specific example for what that looks like. Is there a particular bubble in one of the elementary schools right now that, you know, if we looked at, um, the topic of rightsizing that might help address or any specifics on that front might be helpful to, um, to really connect at home? Because I, I think we've all heard from educators who are really struggling with workload. Um, and we know that, um, we have over a hundred long-term subs across the district. We know we're struggling with teacher recruitment and retention. And so this, this topic matters and it's important. And so as real world as we can get it, I think would be beneficial. Thanks.
And I'm gonna once again call a member of our staff up. Um, is Helena or Brenda here? Brenda Cheetham will come up. I, I tasked them with your specific question, um, yesterday. Member Jacobs and I haven't had a chance to circle back with them today. But, uh, I think Brenda can answer that question. Yep.
Good evening. One example that we have of that is Scenic Park, who on the neighborhood side has, um, multiple, um, combo classes. But with this right sizing move, we'll be able to do a two-round, which means there are two classes at each grade level. So it'd be, teachers would have a partner to work with. So it'd be two candy, two first, two second, two third and two fifth versus combo classes at each level.
Appreciate that. I just took a quick follow-up. And then, um, I, I, I know that we've talked about, um, we've talked about that having a partner in a building to be able to utilize the P L C process as well as just in general, um, a peer teaching the same grade levels beneficial. Do we have any data through our normal progress monitoring process to demonstrate that that trend exists, that it, it impacts academic outcomes? Or is it academic outcomes and teacher retention? Um, or is that data we may want to consider getting at some point if we don't already have it?
I think it's important that teachers have a partner to plan with. When they're doing two grade levels, they're looking at two curriculums on different sides. It's very hard to plan, uh, when you're by yourself. When you have a partner to do that, what makes it look a little easier to plan for your class.
One of the things that, uh, we did analyze over the past couple of days is the combo class and the data around combo classes in relation to, uh, regular one-grade class. Um, it's very intricate to be able to look at apples to apples and oranges to oranges in this case, because we do have Montessori, A B C, open optional, all different types of programs that have combo classes built in as part of the actual, um, program. So we've taken that, as many of those out as we possibly can. And we've looked at the data for the one grade classes and the great data for the combo classes. The most significant thing is six per, the ki, kids that are in one sec, in one grade classes are, have a si, are six percent higher in advanced growth than kids that are in combo classes. And that's like really looking at the significant growth of kids, especially at the primary grades. You know, we do have some combo classes at the primary grades, but the primary grades, we're finding that we really need to have those being individual grade classes. It kind of goes down a little further as you get up toward the fourth and fifth grade, but it is still like three or four percent, like three points up the percent difference in, um, significant growth. But it, but our primary grades, it's a big chunk of our kids.
Thank you for that. And I, the reason why I, I wanted to, to maybe delve early into our progress monitoring conversation, which usually happens during a regular meeting, was, um, I, I think during, I remarked during our conversation about school start times that th- there was maybe not as much recognition, um, of what, what doing nothing and not making a change would impact and recognizing that, um, the former school start times had that, an impact on youth and, and data seemed to indicate that that was, um, multiple potential negative impacts. And so I think it's, it's relevant to call out that, um, taking no action and shelving this plan entirely um, would not result in, in a, a net zero outcome. There are negative outcomes happening with our students in combo classes and, and, um, I think they're called singleton classes. That, we need a new word for that, but, um, I digress. Thank you. But um I digress. Thank you. Uh, we'll start over. Uh, member lessons, we'll go, member Bellamy, the member lessons.
Thank you. So I just want to ask a little bit more for a little bit more information on page eight, I think. Yeah, page eight. When it's, when, expand a little bit, what, it says concerns around enrollment. That mean enrollment being low or enrollment expected to be high? And staffing, meaning, can you elaborate a little bit more about those concerns? Because it shows up in several of the.
So enrollment being s- students deciding to leave early, parents picking and going and looking for other programs. You know, if my school, if my student's gonna be moving to um Willow Wall Elementary, I'm gonna try to get a zone exempt into there and so that I don't have to, in the second year or the third year, whatever it is, do that. Um, as far as staffing goes, really, you know, e- even days after the first announcement came out, we found, we saw some staff at a couple of these schools starting to look at positions and thinking about leaving the schools like now. And that's why we went out to talk to the staff and let them know that they do have a job. Um, we are going to work with them and we really want them to, you know, especially teachers, travel and move with the students um to their next building. But you know, if you're in a year-three closure or a year-two closure, you know, you're kind of looking at what what what's gonna happen. It's gonna be hard. It it'd be really hard. I mean, it's always, you know, even if you you, the board votes on December seventeenth to close some schools, the semester's hard on the families, but think about a year and a half, two and a half years down the road. That's what that's all about. There there's significant concerns. Some of these schools are, the the staff especially are saying, if you're gonna do it, let's do it now.
Yeah.
Now, of course, operationally, we can't close seven schools in a year. There's just not the, able, we're not able to do that. But uh, that's, that's where that concern comes up.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, do I?
Yeah, Paul.
Oh, I, should I just, I I can hold and pass on?
No, no, you go on ahead.
Okay. So I am responsible, or at least the rep- board representative for uh East Side. And on the list, um, there are three Title I schools. Um, actually, I think there are four Title I schools on the list, but three are in clo- very close proximity. Can you uh once again uh talk about how that happened? And I mean, it, I mean, we will, we are going to get resolutions from several community councils requesting uh that, because they see it as those schools taking the brunt of the um resizing. So if, can we just have a a few uh conversations, a little bit of a conversation around that?
Sure. If um, to the president, to remember Bellamy. So when you look on the east side of Anchorage, the older part of Anchorage, um houses were built closer together. Streets were smaller, uh lot sizes were small, and schools were built very close to each other. In fact, when you look on the east side, you may see four or five schools that are really close to each other compared to south side, where it's really a stretch to even put a circle around four or five schools. And that same circle would be around a dozen schools on the east side. So when, when you look at it, the declining enrollment impacts those smaller schools because they were built to be smaller. It impacts them quicker and worse than larger schools. Um, because they already started at a smaller population. And and that decline is, it's, we just see it, you know, it's really, we look at where the affordable housing is, and affordable, of course, is different for everybody, um depending on their perspective. But on the east side, there's just so many more schools at low enrollment rates. Um, and they're very close to each other that it just happened, you know, six years or two years ago. Um, I think Abbott Loop was probably technically considered south, maybe southeast, maybe depending on on who you are. Um, and it was the same discussion two years ago, and so ultimately didn't close any on the east side, but their enrollment dropped even further. And and so it's not really a surprise that when you have this heavy, dense concentration of schools that are very close together, that it's more likely that those are gonna be the ones that are easier to close than in an area where you're you're dealing with fifteen to twenty miles.
Thank you, member Bellamy. We'll go to member lessons.
I'm gonna try to pack as much in as I can in this opportunity. Um, I did want to um expand on or or echo uh member Jacob's uh interest in surveying families from the Montessori program, but I actually think there would be valuable input uh if uh to the board in this decision-making process. If a survey were to go out to all families at each of the seven schools with questions to the effect of, would, you know, if you, if you had to choose, and this happened tomorrow, would you go to the named receiving school? Would you pivot to homeschool? Would you pivot to a private school? Would you um enter the lottery for another option in ASD? Would you move from the state of Alaska? I think there is useful information that we could glean um about how families would adapt should the recommendation as proposed move forward. And I don't know whether that's uh within your bandwidth uh to create and send out a survey to the seven schools. Um, but I think that would be helpful information. Um, I am, I appreciate um slide four here that you have on the screen. I think one of the things I was hoping to see is um in addition to the utilization percentage is really the effect on people-to-teacher ratios and and combo classes. Again, thinking that a lot of the messaging throughout this process has been focused on the improved delivery of services. And I know we have to distinguish um our fiscal, our FY26 reality, but if we could pretend that this year's PTRs could be applied to next year, which will take a Herculean effort from the legislature to enable that to happen. But if we could, you know, what would that mean, you know, for Baxter? Yeah, for for the students at, you know, Chester Valley, College Gate and Scenic Park with an additional seventeen ninety and fifty-three students? What does that do specifically under our current PTRs to their, uh to the staffing allocation? I guess I'm looking for a little bit more granular data on, oh, we can make uh these combo classes, you know, three combo classes at this school go away, for example.
So I I think this was a multi-question question. So I would like to start with the survey. To put a survey together and put it in five languages takes about ten to twelve days. By the time you get it online and give it two to three weeks to get back and then do the assessment of the results, it's gonna happen on or about the seventeenth of December. And so I I think that as an afterthought, probably something that if it was planned early on, almost immediately, would have been a great idea, we could still do it. But I think because of the, the timing of it being um really productive in helping the board make decisions, I would hope that we would get four board members or more that would want to do that as opposed to just one, because it is a lot of work for something that reasonably won't have the results until potentially within a day or two of making a final decision. If, if then, and and then if those results were to be questioned, um, I, that's a lot of work for. So if there's, if the board has four or more, I think we go for it. But if it's just one board member, I don't know that we would devote that amount of staff effort for something that has a low likelihood of being very successful.
Yep. Um, thank you, Mr. Anderson. To member lessons, it was uh on my to-do list before we wrap up today. Um, at or around five o'clock to maybe do a straw poll regarding what data we want to ask for in surveys, um, recognizing that some of it may come after our um decision juncture. Um, with that said, do you have a a follow-up of one or maybe two questions?
Well, I think that the, in the multi-question question, uh, the the second part of that was really, can we receive more granular information on what the effects of consolidation would be on the receiving schools, not just utilization? But you know, how many classes are there currently at Chester Valley, College Gate, Scenic Park? Are they combo classes? What does that mean for additional allocation of specialists? Because I feel like that's what's been kind of held out there as the end result. And again, that's entirely subject to our one-hundred-and-eleven-million-dollar structural deficit um that we can offset a little bit with some fund balance. Um, but I guess I'm, if if this year's PTRs were were, could be applied, what would that look like?
So.
How do we, how do we know that the services are going to be improved?
So member lessons for, I I I'd go back to what Senior Director Cheetham actually said about Scenic Park. She gave that actual, um, that took about a half a day, because you have to go and figure out which kids are li- would be going to Scenic Park, what grades are they in? Then moving them to Scenic Park, and then what, what do you have in each of those grades? It takes a while to actually do that analysis. That's why we gave you one instead of a whole bunch. Um, if that's what you guys need to be able to make decisions, um, I'd I'd ask that you as a board request as a whole, because it would take away my senior directors from their schools for a good number of days to do that. And and then that doesn't include the specialist that would, I need to get my other staff to, after that's done, then do that analysis.
Um, I appreciate the feedback on that nothing, uh, no, no products can be presented without staff work. And I appreciate that there's a lot of work. Um, that's to some, to some extent, um, I feel like information is helpful uh in a decision in this magnitude that's gonna impact twelve hundred kids and their families uh and the communities that, you know, have housing around these schools. Um, I did have one more specific question, Mr. Chair. So on the twenty-twenty-four CIP, the six-year CIP, it was published, you know, July first. Um, there was a summary of um year-one non-bond projects for twenty-twenty-four. And I did highlight that a couple of items stood out to me. One was the Lakewood Elementary School uh conversion. Um, and one was the Whaley School conversion. And and I was at Lakewood yesterday. I saw the the new room. Um, this is the, the, it's the no-restraints room. There are crash pads. It's been constructed. The windows are reinforced, so if a student throws chairs at the windows, they won't shatter. The student won't hurt hurt him or herself. Um, the student can be observed, but is not entirely, you know, secluded. Um, and that was, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. The Whaley School conversion was nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. This is how we use school bond debt reimbursement. So I know that Lakewood happened. I guess did Whaley hap- did we spend? And has, has nine-hundred thousand dollars and change of building infrastructure already improved Whaley?
I, I don't know the amount that we've put into Whaley, but I know when we signed the DOJ agreement, we were obligated to make improvements to Whaley because of the the conditions. I know when they came last week and I think it was last week, might have been the week before, and they went through Whaley. The uh inspectors were, were very pleased with a lot of different things that got better. But I don't, I did not memorize the invoices, so I can go back and find out how much actually was put into Whaley. Um, I mean, Whaley is its own discussion with the DOJ a- agreement. We were somewhat obligated to do a lot of things now and very quickly. And we had one year to be in compliance. So I think the fines, whatever we spent, would have made that pale in comparison.
Thank you, member lessons. Um, member Wilson, any additional questions at this time? Thank you. All right. We'll go to member Higgins and then member Donnelly.
Thank you. I'm, I'm focused on academic outcomes. That's everything. And from a board, a primary goal is always gotta be safety, number one. And then academic outcomes, with a voice of the public, they're being very vocal out there. Um, and as they should be, because it's involving their kids. And it's the academic part that isn't, to me, discussed enough. We talk about ease of administration. I don't, that that's not a academic issue. Uh, there are some benefits and makes it easier, but you've got successes out there. I think Bear Valley is being very successful with limited numbers and and all the other stuff they're doing. And and so when I go and Google stuff, I see smaller school versus larger, and it's always a plus to be smaller. I look at the issue of parental involvement. Now, I uh appreciate member Bellamy's question about the Title I schools and the issues, because like, under park, that's surrounded by lower income. It has a lot of single families, from what I can understand. There's a lot of transportation and involvement in schools more difficult when it's further away. So we're gonna have a, an adverse impact, it seems like, in regards to act outcomes if you have less parental involvement. I mean, I just, it it impacts academics, it impacts graduations, it impacts a lot of stuff. That's the studies out there. I haven't seen anything in regards to studies in regards to the combination classes. You're right, some combination classes are inherent in the program, like Montessori. But the other programs, the second, third grade, I get, and talking to a lot of people throughout the school district, they've got some teachers that do it great, some teachers that don't, the ones that do it great is fine and the like. So I'm concerned in in that sense, in what is the acad- what is the academic information that we have? Other than I saw an example, I'm looking for something more than that. Um, as to what the studies have shown, what works, what doesn't, what are our options? We moved sixth grade up last, you know, last year, of course, and and now we've got overcapacity schools. And I'm gonna be looking at the end of this year, getting out how many kids academically advanced a full year and how they did. And I want to compare that to the last five years, because the studies say that's gonna go down. Just academics results go down, sixth grade and middle school. You've said there was examples where it's contrary to that, so I'm gonna look for the hard facts. That's what I deal with, is hard facts. So I'm looking for the sec- for the combined classes. Is there anything out there that gives us something other than, I have one example, I'm not, or some examples. I'm interested in seeing what do we have that shows the impact of that versus the impact of parental involvement? When we close schools, I'm trying to put it all together and say, are we gonna help kids academically or not by closing these schools? And that's, that's what my challenge is. I'm I'm putting that above all the other issues, except safety. I believe that always at the top, and that's a problem for back, um, for Bear Valley, of course, uh uh safety issue. But I'm trying to look for other information other than what I find on the computer, and it it just isn't measuring out to me that it's gonna academically result in improvements. But it makes it easier to run the schools, which is not the biggest issue. When it comes to acc- when it comes to finances, I just want the balance out there. We got increased busing, we get less money from the state, all the other issues weigh into it. And I didn't see that being distributed. I just saw the average cost of thing. And that's, that's not an accurate view of how much money we get or other expenses that we have as well. So I just want, I I'm looking for you to provide me. I want to see whatever academic type information is out there saying, these changes are gonna be good for kids. And and I haven't seen anything on the computer that registers that it that these changes are good. I understand Lakewood so under capacity, this, and other issues. I understand that each school varies. But the idea that the logic is it applies to all the schools to make them bigger is gonna result in higher outcomes. I don't see that in my information. And I am concerned about the involvement of lower-income uh issues in regards to parents' involvement and the selection of some of these schools where it is low income, it is single-family type of issues. And I don't want to see those kids disadvantaged uh disproportionately. And that's been an issue nationally as well, I know, uh, in regards to that. And that's, so I'm looking for you to provide, I would love to see some information academically, supporting that this is better for the kids rather than easy for administration, which is not a high priority to me. Um, uh, or cost, because um if we're gonna, if it's only being done for cost, I want to see more options out there for cutting costs. I know the Legislature Caucus is sending stuff out saying their priorities is balanced budget and a large BSA increase to to reduce classroom sizes. And how are we gonna reduce classroom sizes when we're over a hundred percent? Or in the case with two middle schools, or a hundred and twenty percent? They they're doing stuff in, in in closets that were made for, for, you know, storage. So um uh these decisions. So um, uh, these decisions as far as impact, as far as the size of the school, I'm concerned too about the academic impact that it's going to have on that as well.
So Member Higgins, I'm going to ask you to synthesize that into a question.
I'm 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 simply asking them that I would like a follow up with them with acad information on showing me how the academic impact, what you think is from studies, from other issues, not just I think it's going to be great. I'm looking for stuff that they may have that will show me what the academic impact will be based upon studies that are out there. There were a lot of studies on sixth grade to middle school, read them off even before we voted on it. And so I'm going to be measuring that at the end of this year, see how we did compared to the previous five years. I'm looking right now that you're asking us to cut title one uh locations I'm into. In regards to how it's going to impact outcomes.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Appreciate that. So um, I I think we had a question earlier regarding um how addressing class size bubbles. Um, reducing the number of combination classrooms, reducing specialist transport time can benefit students. Do we want to both circle back to that one more time, address that? And then two, if there's something that we can put in board connect to the superintendent, perhaps can we address those two things? Thanks.
So as far as well, yes, addressing the academic outcomes for singletons, as we've been calling it. I think it makes it a little teachers have more ability to address the uh the student problems of learning when they're working on just one grade level. When they have to um provide instruction for two grade levels within a school day, that can get a little problematic for them. So in learning, students need that focus just on the grade level that they're on. Uh, but looking at moving two grade levels in one school day, um, I think would be more of a problem to do when they're focusing on two grade levels versus one. So I think academic outcomes would would increase if their focus is there just on that grade level.
And thank you. Um, appreciate the the response. I I think we referenced um some data uh from Mr. Gustafson, uh which might be both helpful in board connect as well as potentially any other additional clarifying information that we can point to um regarding academic outcomes for combo classes versus um singular class level.
Okay, we can provide that. We have that. Um, can I, is it okay if I try to answer some more about the title one? Is that okay? Um, I got to thinking when you started talking and when um remember Higgins started talking about title one funding and what a title one school gets in their funding. Title one funding comes down to a per pupil amount. And a smaller school that's a title one school gets a very minimal amount of money. Like Unaca Valley has a very small group of students. That school does not get very much money, and it's really hard to actually make a change with the amount of money that they actually get. And if you can combine schools and combine the actual monies that kids get in a title one school, which this would do as we move kids into other title one schools that would beef up their title one standing, and it would actually give more money out of title one to be able to do program programs, teachers, paras that actually can make a difference in those students' lives. Right now, some schools, they can't afford another person or or anything. They are looking for addenda, and our teachers are burnt out. And our teacher, you know, when they're working with the really struggling students, and if they're teaching a combo class that we're having more and more problems finding teachers that are willing to do an addenda outside of the school day. And it's, we are actually finding it hard, hard to actually spend all that title one funding in some cases because it's not enough to make a big difference. And if we can combine them together, we can make those schools would have more money to be able to make something for the kids. So I know that that's like looking further down with that title funding, but that's one thing. The other, the other thing um with the split classes, what I hear from when I talk to teachers when I'm going around, if they're in a split class, it's just finding the ability and the time to be able to provide the best possible instruction for the kids, especially with our new curriculum. I mean, a third, fourth split is really hard is what all my reading specialists are saying. Because there's different, it's just such a different curriculum. So I guess that's just, you know, like, we can put that, those results about the combo classes in the board connect. Um, but as of right now, I I don't have anything I could really provide, Miss Member Higgins, as far as data on that part.
Thank you, Mr. Gustafson. Thank you, Member Bellamy. Member Higgins, you have a follow up.
Oh, thank you. Uh, uh, let me just say this. I know that I just came back actually from Evil Academy, and it was kind of interesting. They do differentiate it. They put a lot of emphasis on it. So that's like a multi classroom, if you want to, where they're worried about everybody reading, being advanced a full year. They're catching up people. They're doing that all the time, and that's almost like a, you know, third, fourth, if you wanted, but it is kids that are separated like that. If we're focused on kids moving up, you got a little bit of that happening anyway uh within that. So that's one of the reasons why I questioned the third, fourth, because you know, you've got kids in their third grade that are reading first grade level and others is fifth grade level. And if you're just giving them one third grade level, they're not advancing, and you're not catching up. So there is a little bit of component of these classes and all of our classes, if we're doing it right, in my opinion. So that's why I challenged the issue of what the academic outcomes show, because I think the best teachers are already dealing with that, and they're getting good outcomes from it.
Okay, I didn't hear a question there, so we're going to move on. Member Donley, do you have additional questions at this time? Okay, thank you. I'm going to jump in then. Um, work from my list here. So given AST's lack of major progress, although I recognize we've made some regarding um equity of access related to charter school and optional programs. Uh, I'm trying to wrap my head around why we would consider a recommendation for a charter program specifically in Lakewood Elementary. Um, it is tucked into one of the true corners of our municipality. Um, and our families and I'm thinking in East Side and Hillside. Uh, any charter program that's put in that building is going to be inaccessible to a large portion of families. So could we talk to the rationale for that versus maybe Tudor Elementary, which is more centrally located in Midtown? Thanks.
Sure. So Lakewood's our lowest enrolled school in the district at thirty nine percent utilization. Um, when you look all around Lakewood, a lot of the houses don't have children in them. In fact, you see a lot of airport workers. Um, and I I don't mean that in any other way, but you see the vans with the logos of the companies on them. And there's not a lot of children around there. So you're looking at a school that either way, you're you're gonna either have to drive them in or they're going to have to bus in. Um, for the most part, because it's it that walking area and and around that school just doesn't have a lot of children. So when you look at, it's also a a very large school, and we have um charter schools that are that are pretty large, and they need a larger facility rather than an east side. If you take um without naming names, one that's close to four hundred and eighty students, it's not going to fit in an Unaca Valley of three hundred capacity. It needs a much larger school to be able to fit. And and because we do have some charters with those sizes, um, it seemed to make a good fit. And although it's just been one board member, but I I think you probably have three board members supporting you on putting something in the criteria once final selections are approved by the board that charter schools would provide some sort of transportation into the fund. And so we've been looking at um, a potential hub and spoke where multiple charter schools together could put money into a hub and spoke system that might start reaching towards that equity. And and so you can't put a large school into a small school in order to achieve equity because it would be bursting at the seams, and you couldn't allow those neighborhood children in anyway, because the school might not fit without a lot of reloads. But if you put it into a larger school and then work on this hub and spoke transportation system, work for the outreach, work toward all those things, and you're really looking if it's an immersion type school, you're looking at the youngest of the kids. So they start at kindergarten. Um, you know, certainly at very young ages, if it's a charter school, that's not immersion, that's less important, but it comes down to transportation is what's preventing equity um from happening. And so if three other board members were to decide that that is important, and we have looked at it, I think everyone knows we've been looking at it for about a month and a half um or so, that you know, honestly, you're achieving more than one goal. You're you're helping a charter school with students who are ASD students who is struggling with the lack of a BSA increase, the same as everybody else. Um, just a little bit differently and a little bit later than the rest of us.
I'm gonna uh follow up and uh and move to um Rilke Shul, who's um I think it's public record has written a letter, the APC has written a letter of support, asking the district to consider moving into Lakewood in particular. Um, in this because it's related to rightsizing, but it also happens to be an agenda item for us tonight. In the letter from their APC, it specifically referenced that they their program might not be financially viable, essentially if they aren't given a facility in short order um through the rightsizing initiative. I guess I'm hopeful for a bit of background as to where um from administration as to how they came to be where they are. Why I'd heard anecdotally that it was a a design build project specifically for the program. And then two, um the other, I guess, the 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 second tranche of the question would be why Lakewood versus Tudor Elementary, which is nearby the the current program? And then the third would be, um, is there given that we're set to approve, I believe we're set to approve a ten year charter renewal for the program tonight, does that make sense to take up when we aren't sure, one, the program has concerns about financial viability absent a fill building via the rightsizing initiative? And then two, we aren't sure whether or not the rightsizing initiative will result in a building being available. So should we tie this charter renewal to twelve seventeen and not make a decision tonight? Thanks.
Okay, I think that was five questions.
Took member lessons, Lee, since apparently it's allowed. Thanks.
I I know. Can I do the last one first? So it does make sense to tie approval um to knowing that they're going to have a building. So I think Rikishul's got about, I think it's one point six million in fund balance reserve. Currently, their lease expires June thirtieth, and they're spending seven hundred and thirty eight thousand a year. Um, at least this year, the last year of a lease. It was a design um bill lease option where Rikishul borrowed two million dollars from the school district to pay back over twenty years at, um, I think it was zero percent interest. It was certainly very low. There were at least four questions in the middle of that. So Rikishul wouldn't fit in Tudor. So I think that was one of them. Um, it would, it would certainly it would certainly max out Tudor, although Tudor, they could probably make it work if you would. If the board would like, we can walk Rikishul's principal through on a on a weekend when there's no staff around to be respectful during this time and and confirm or deny whether it would fit. Um, same with Lake Hood. I think I answered that one, and I'm I'm sure there's one in there that I am blanking on.
So I I I think I think you hit most of them. The, I I guess the if 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 administration is willing to consider that, I think I'd want to hear from other board members before we take a a uh any program through a particular building. I I guess I'll just log that I I do have concerns about making a charter school less accessible. Um, the charter application for Rilke specifically um touts and acknowledges and and praises the fact that the program has um students from across the municipality. Um, I wouldn't be able to drive my students from Muldoon to Lakewood every day. And and so if I if I'm one example, I know there are hundreds of others. So I don't have a a a map um indicating, you know, which dots and which houses in the municipality are their students, but um it would moving Rilke out of the area of Tudor Elementary um would have a a double negative impact for that midtown area if the board also considers um making Tudor Elementary a rightsizing building. And so um, it's it's kind of two punches to to one portion of talent. And one of my goals through this process is to to mitigate impact as much as possible, ensure that we're providing families options where we can. And so there seems to be a natural pairing there. I just wanted to highlight that. Um. And then I likely will ask the board to consider postponing approval of the um charter renewal for this particular program um until we know for sure that there's going to be a building available. I mean, that's based off of a concern that the APC expressed frankly, that uh the program might not be financially viable without it. And that's a concern is none of us on this dais, well, Dr. Bryant, well, um, none of the board members here on this dais will be around when that lease comes up again in in a decade. So um, that's a concern to me. Um, we'll start over because we and I do want to flag that we still have about an hour actually because we're running an executive session today. So we're still making great time. We have a time, certainly enough time for another round. Uh, Member Bellamy.
Thank you. I have eight questions. I'm I'm joking. I'm joking. So one of the things that I I guess I want to talk staffing. And I I didn't send this question in because I'm still kind of formulating. Many of our classrooms already have, I mean, when when I think of staffing, I think of you know, highly dedicated individuals who have spent a lot of time honing their craft. They have an expertise. They have a grade level. And I I just, I I don't want to lose sight of uh of of how important it is to have classes that are resourced with highly qualified teachers. So my, I am concerned that if we don't right size, if we don't figure out figure fi- figure out whether we're going to consolidate, whether we're going to re all of that. We're just not going to have the quality, the numbers and the quality of staff that we need with the expertise that we need. So if I'm wrong and I'm off base, please tell me because that would allow me to sleep at least one more hour at night. But I I am concerned that that even even going through the rightsizing, going through this plan, we're not going to have staff. And I think that is getting lost in the conversation, or maybe it's too high in my conversation. So somebody talked me off the ledge to right size me. Uh, because I I I I think I it's one thing for us, for for all of us to advocate for. Nobody wants to close these schools. Nobody, that's a given. None of us. But in the end, we've got to decide what is going to be most important. Giving our kids the best opportunity for the best outcome possible with highly qualified, highly skilled, well-resourced teachers and administrators, or are we going to piecemeal it? I I I just, it it's frustrating to me. So if I'm, if 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 anyway, I'll stop there. So I don't know if you have, I don't even know if that is a question. It it right, really, right now, it's a fear. And I, my question, I guess, if I had to put it into a question is do we have adequate staffing? Are we going to be able to return, retain what we have, resource them to the point where they where they are the best that they can be? I mean, we can't, some programs have had subs all year. That is unacceptable to me as a parent, as a former administrator, and as a board member. So are we going to be looking at more of that? And I I and I get we, there's a lot that we don't know. Uh, and we can't read, we don't have crystal balls. But if we're saving schools, if we're trying to save schools, what is that? What does that look like when we are trying to maintain, retain, and even recruit highly qualified staff? And you can get back to me later if you need to. Oh, hey.
Hello, Member Bellamy. Um, I think it's a interesting point you raised, like what is the, if I understand correctly, what is the nexus between some of the staffing challenges we've seen in this labor market and the right
some of the staffing challenges we've seen in this labor market and the right sizing initiative? And one thing that comes to mind for me as we talk about, you know, single grade level buildings versus larger elementary schools that have two and three teachers per grade level is I think it is, um, it does dovetail with some of the trends that we've seen in staffing. Because as districts, and and we're not alone in this, across the nation have struggled to find qualified applicants who are coming out of teacher preparation programs. We've had to pivot to alternative certification programs. So Emergency Cert is a good example. We have 50 plus teachers who have a bachelor's degree, but they've never been through a traditional teacher prep program. And so the state allows us to for them to get a cert and for them to be working in a classroom while they're working on their teacher certification or their preparation. But when they have a grade level partner in the building, then they have that experienced veteran teacher next to them who can help give them that practical day to day knowledge, help them prepare lesson plans, help them deal with challenging student behaviors that they might be facing. I think my biggest fear is when we have those alternatively certified teachers on their own at a grade level in a small building because they don't have that additional support network. You know, I I spent 10 years in the classroom and at the end of those 10 years, I I I would say I was a pretty good teacher, but I didn't come in that way. Right? I had lots of potential, but you know, there was lots of collaboration that happened, you know, through teaming and whatnot in in the high school that I worked at that allowed me to really grow into my potential. And I think with the number of teachers that we're now bringing on through various alternative pathways, I think these larger elementary schools really support them in a way, same for our long term subs, support them in a way that um we can't in the really small schools.
Member Bellamy, do you have a follow up?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Member Lessons?
Um, this is a follow up on Member Jacobs on your questions about Rikashul. Um, I mean, it seems to me that Rikashul's ability to use its current facility, although it maybe needs some repairs, is entirely contingent on a base student allocation increase. If we had an inflation adjusted BSA of, I'll just say it, 1963 for um $1,963, that's inflation adjusted from FY11 to FY26 at 480 students, more or less, all of a sudden, they will have an additional 3 point something, maybe $4 million in revenue that could be allocated, as my back of the envelope numbers, you know, towards a lease. I mean, do they have a high lease? Yes. But they could allocate, they could also walk back the, I will just say, the admirable adjustments they've had to make in increasing their people teacher ratios and um and decreasing their staffing. Um, they had, they have adjusted their reality to decline purchasing power. And so I mean, we could, of course, make the, you know, conversation about their recharter contingent on 1217, but but really their ability to be a viable program, in my mind, is contingent on the legislature doing its part to maintain education as they're obliged by the constitution. So I don't really know where to go with that, but um it just seems to me that the charter should not be contingent upon the facility, I think is my gut feel. The charter should stand on its own. And we should look to the legislature for the rest of
Yeah, uh
the situation.
I mean, without engaging in discussion, Member Lessons, I think the reason why I'm considering postponing um a decision on the charter renewal tonight is because it it seems like from documentation we re- the board received from the APC that they're indicating their financial viability is contingent on receiving a building and not on obvious adjustment. And so based on on their own request, I feel like since that's what they're asking for, you're obligated to link those two things. Um, and because it isn't very long away, I think that that's reasonable. Um, I will say, and I guess a follow up, I'm gonna pivot back to a question now because we're talking about this particular program. Um, I understand and and we received multiple emails indicating that the lease um amount of the entire budget for this particular program is 20%. Do we have any idea as to how abnormal that really is? I connected with um one parent um who's involved in their own charter program, and they thought that their um percentage of leased to total budget was 16 or 18%. And so it wasn't that far different. And so is it a case where while we may be getting letters from one program, other programs are in a similar challenging situation and have just made cuts as well? Um, and I'll I'll second that. Um, I I think the word admirable is appropriate as to having to reduce your budget um to to align with income. We've had to do that every year and 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 so I appreciate and and understand deeply the challenges that um our charter programs are facing too. Thanks.
I think we can provide that in Board Connect, the least percentage of overall budget naturally Aquarian is zero. And Alaska Native Charter School is zero, but we can get the rest of them.
Great, thank you. Um, going back through the member listens, do you have a follow up or another question?
Well, I guess it's more of a comment. Um, well, I share your concerns about a charter school being in such a relatively inaccessible part of the city. Um, I think that if there is interest in a school across the community, it would be nice to have a school in a central and accessible location on a major corridor. That would be my vision of improved accessibility.
Understood and I appreciate that. I I think the one caveat to that would be if we had accomplished our guardrail of making programs accessible via bringing down the transportation barrier wall. And um, I'm frankly excited to learn more, Mr. Anderson, regarding a potential hub. Um, with that said, want to keep our our eye on questions and avoid discussion. Member Wilson, do you have any additional questions? Okay. Member Higgins, additional questions?
Just one comment. Um, I I think Member Bellamy raised an interesting point as to how our ability to fill positions is impacting it because that's a of reduction in staffing because of lack of funds. I don't view this, and I don't know if you do, as part of a component to deal with that. What if we have an additional 200 jobs we can't fill next year, or 100 jobs? How this, I mean, this is something as far as having two students, I mean, you you always have new staff coming in. So if there were a second grade teacher in a school with no other second grade teachers on their own, so you have that problem out there no matter what. But it is a good question to raise. What are our contingency plans of where we have a continual reduction? What what are the factors we should be looking at? And is there anything we can do now to pick over that?
I think I, to Member Higgins, you know, last year you did an amendment to one of the the memos that we had that actually opened uh Recruitment and Retention Working Group, and that working group has been going uh now for a couple of months and will continue to to go. Um, I think right now we're kind of looking at that and seeing what can we do because overall, you know, it doesn't matter if we close schools or we don't close schools, if the the group of teachers aren't there, they're not there. And, you know, we have had a big turnover of educators over the past few years, both principals and teachers. And um, I do, I do know that when you have like a two or three um section grade level at a school, that does help out when there is an absence because we do have a shortage of substitute teachers also. A lot of our substitute teachers are teaching classes like Member Bellamy said. So um, you know, having the ability to be able to spread that work out when we have those problems of staffing is pretty important, I think.
It just hits me that anything we can do to somehow show more appreciation for the staff that we've got uh in retention, anything at all in that kind of plan, i- it can't hurt at this point.
I'm circling through. I don't see President Holman's hand up on Zoom. And so Member Donley checking in, any questions right now? Okay. Um, I'm gonna ask a question on process, and we touched a little bit about process earlier. Um, I I I think it's still an open question as to whether or not, or from my perspective, whether or not administration will submit a revised memo based on feedback from the board, feedback from the community and and what's been learned um since the initial proposed list was generated. Um, with that said, if if a member of the board, whether before or after revised memorandum from administration, should even one uh be offered, um, should a board member remove one of the programs from the right sizing, one of the schools from the right sizing list? How, how, if at all, will we address uh programmatic capacity, say, if Lakewood were removed uh by the board? Uh, I assume that Lakewood in in general was offered up in part because there's excess programmatic capacity in that portion of town. And so what would the process be for addressing that same concern in future years? Would we be looking at um revisiting a three year plan one year in? Um, is there another option to do that? Or would we just, um, are we signaling by removing a program and not offering a substitute that we're um accepting excess capacity in a certain area of town? Um, what's the best way to address that concern?
I think when you look at just how low the enrollment is at Lakewood, if that were to not be selected as a closure candidate, we would need to, one, it would have all the problems of a very, very small school um with anticipated reduction of 2 to 2.3% uh enrollment decline over several years, but we would probably look at other district programs. Um, maybe that we could surge into that space, but it wouldn't help with the academic level of service. And and it would be, I mean, we would consciously know that if it's a one section school and it's now going to be a point X, point eight section school, it is what it is, right? I mean, it's it's the lowest utilized school we have. So we're in in an area where there's very, very few young children. Um, it would, we would probably look at other district programs. I don't, I'll turn to Sven on the academic side, but I think we've been talking that now for six plus weeks.
Well, and if I could clarify the question, like I think I'm less, less looking for the the merits on um Lakewood as a right sizing candidate, more about process. Um, if if the one Eagle River program that's on the right sizing list or the one West Anchorage or South Anchorage program is removed from consideration from the right sizing program, how how does administration view? I I assume that it wouldn't ask the board to offer up another suggestion in in its place. And so, right, so assuming that's true, how do we address the excess programmatic capacity as a team of district board and administration going forward?
I think because we need a decision in December, not because I want a decision before Christmas, but because we need that so we can build a January budget for the board to approve in February by charter by the assembly um in March, that there are no significant changes after December because we now will have built a budget based off whatever the board's decisions were. Whether the board would like to relook and do another right sizing every year is something the board would certainly have to decide. I think the beauty, the the beauty of a multi-year program is people can't question whether a decision that was made was really a decision every year after that, and whether every other year you get to relook every previous decision as to whether they still agree, right? That's that's the beauty of 12 months. You go 12 months out, but you know, our our district is is trying to focus on students and what's best for them. And we've taken a lot out of the community this year. We took a lot out of the community two years ago. Frankly, that's why we waited two years. I I think a 12 month rotating, what are we going to close this year? It is, is, takes away from the great things the district's doing and what we're really focused on. So, but that's the board's call. If the board were to reduce the number, um, if it's a number that fits over two years or one year, I I think you know, I I think every other year is probably the quickest that this community can absorb this level of emotion personally.
And then um just a quick follow up question then on process. Um, would administration see um similar concerns regarding lack of ability to process and communicate with the community to move a school from, say, year three to year two or year one to year two? So is is there less concern regarding um moving programs around the um three year plan than there is to adding a new program?
I'd be much less concerned with that. I think once a school's on a closure list, and we've already gotten comments and feedback from people, why should I wait for year two or year three? Sure, there's going to be someone who disagrees, but I think that's more in line with um changing the base set, but it's not adding a new school. I think you're still well within the public um messaging.
Thank you. All right, we still have time for another round of questions. So we'll start with Member Bellamy. Any additional questions? Okay, Member Lessons?
Um, I guess maybe I have a couple. Um, one would be you've positioned, you've put the, you've you've put out there, you've supposed that three schools in one year is really the maximum capacity. You've also presented in what I heard from conversations with people who are year two or year three staff saying, a- as you shared earlier, I'm really concerned about enrollment declines. I'm concerned that if there are enrollment declines at my school, then oops, all of a sudden in August of next year, uh even though the school isn't slated to be closed, there will be additional staff displacements. And so I guess my inclination, if there was a plan to go forward, would be to rip off the Band-Aid as quickly as possible for as many schools as possible. And so if that would be a, you know, can you do four schools in a year? Can you do five schools in a year? I understand that you position, you know, that you offered three. I'm just, I'm trying to minimize.
So, so I think that a lot of it has to do with what the repurpose plan is because moving a school out, moving a charter in, that's like two moves. Moving a a school out but having a closure is one move. And so we'd have to look at what the repurpose plan is. To move a school out and to move a school in, we would look at three being probably the maximum, but if we did a fourth, we might need to have some contracting that we would need to contract some movers or something. Um, moving five, we'd have to talk um in a in a year. That might be pretty difficult, but it might just be more contracting. Do you have anything to add to that one, Mr. Anderson?
You know, we we haven't, um, we have not approached contractors to find out if there's enough of them available during the PCS military moving sea, actually, everybody moving season. No one's going to want to move here in December. But that is the busy moving season, and and that's what we're competing with is the same resources that all of Anchorage is using. So we we're feel pretty confident if we were to increase the cost a little bit and contract that four seems doable. Past that, there's an awful lot of risk of saying we're gonna close and then not be able to pull it off. So it would take a lot more analysis.
And if I could just add one comment, the other piece to the multi-year plan or um being very mindful of how many schools that we close at once is we want to close a school with compassion and intentionality if it happens. So for example, like with the Abbott Loop students, we still need to have that seamless handoff between outgoing principal, incoming principal, oh, identifying students down to the classroom level and making sure that they have familiar faces when they go to their new school, multiple opportunities to visit that school. Really, um, making sure that students feel welcome in their new building is a top priority. So I'd also like to communicate to the board the feasibility of not just replicating experience, but maybe even improving upon that experience depending on what the plan is. So that's, that's my why behind this.
Um, thank you. I I would like to follow up. Um, I mean, I've tried to do some reading about what's working well or not well in other districts around the the country. And months ago, um, a community member brought up Jeffco County, which is outside of Denver. Uh, or Jeffco, Jeffco Schools, and they did some sort of a Herculean, like 16 or 17 school closure. They're about twice the size of ASD in a year. Um, and what I was just reading is that one of their recommendations um or thoughts is that when you have schools that are getting consolidated, combined, there could be benefits, and of course, would defer to the superintendent and team in um offering additional um time for staff coming together at the start of the year um to build school community. I mean, it's it's about the students, yes, but but it was an integral piece of their uh experience that that staff needed time to not only unpack their boxes and set up classrooms, but maybe could benefit from additional um addenda so that they could have and build a school community and culture. You know, and because we're complicated with additional students in a in a school, um, master scheduling is challenging. And all of a sudden, you need to think about um if you have a second PE teacher at a school where you didn't used to um if you have a second PE teacher at a school where you didn't used to have a PE teacher, a second PE teacher, all of a sudden, your cafeteria is being used as a gym space. How is that going to change your lunchroom scheduling? So I just, I recognize the complexity of the school consolidation process, and I just want to throw out there for the future that it would be good to keep tabs on the resources that staff will need in a, i- if a combined future comes to be.
Yeah, we we've had lots of those types of conversations, and of course, anytime we can get a staff in early, it does, it it, there's a price point for that, of course. One thing that I I will say is with the way we have things organized right now with our senior directors, none of these moves that we, none of these closures and going to different schools goes past or changes senior director. So like Senior Director Chief, and she would actually, if one of her schools closed, those students are going to her other schools. So she is already working, and those principals are already working as a group together. And so that a lot of that um collaboration time that principals have to have, because they got to have time too to be able to talk and work with their staffs and stuff, is is critical. And and we, uh, you know, what, the the Abbott Loop move um is definitely a a model that we have, but we're definitely, every time we are looking, we're looking at what can we do to help these kids and these families in the transition? And teachers and parents and everybody.
Um, so again, this is maybe a process question, but if a board member has, um, you know, says, I I can't, I cannot vote for, you know, one or two or however many of these schools, what is the process for identif, I mean, what should the process be for identifying that um ahead of December? Or is truly, maybe as you said earlier, you're envisioning this budget workshop day as the most opportune time to do so?
I, it worked last time. Um, whatever work means depends on how you look at it. I I thought that that gave the board time in a, in a uh, a more calm environment to talk in groups and come to consensus. And and we all knew ultimately that didn't mean that that's the way you would vote when it finally came out, but but that that was going to be the board's guidance. And I thought that was useful if five minutes from now, board members all want to give a thumbs up, thumbs down, and that's the will of the board that we take schools off. I think we respond to the will of the board, so. Um, but I think the Saturday working session is less chaotic in in a lot of ways. Um, but, you know, I'm game for, I'm game for this Saturday if that's what the board wants.
Um, oh, you have a follow-up question, I guess. It seems like now's a good time. Um, I had just circled twelve-seven as the best day, but then I heard maybe we need something before twelve-three. So is this Saturday truly the best Saturday to do it, or is twelve-seven too late?
You know, we're still collecting information. I think the board's still collecting information. I, I mean, I'm game whenever the board's ready, but we're going to have more information if you give us a little bit more time.
So is there, um, the the two dates that have been thrown out thus far are this Saturday and twelve-seven? Are there board? Or twelfth or eleven-thirty? So is there any board member who isn't available eleven-thirty?
Vice President Jacob, I will simply say I I'll attend remotely whenever it is, but I would prefer December seventh myself.
Well, we've we've identified a couple of times, all, um, President Holman, I will work with you, um, Ms. Sullivan, as well as Dr. Bryant, and we will get something scheduled one of those three Saturdays. Um, recognizing that they're all viable candidates according to administration without looking at schedules first. Um, with that said, do we have something from administration before we go back?
Eleven-thirty is the Saturday right after Thanksgiving, and a lot of our staff, if they need to be there, may not be there because they take, a lot of people take trips.
Travel, yeah. Okay. All right. So we'll um work that offline. No need to do that here. Um, member Lessons, did you have any other follow-up questions before we move on?
I just wanted to underscore the magnitude of the budget conversation that we're going to have, and I think that the past two years have involved like a good three-hour chunk just on the budget, and it it might be an extensive work session if we're talking about schools taking a break and then closing a massive deficit. That's a big day.
Thank you. All right. Uh, member Wilson, um, any other questions at this time? Okay. Um, we have member Donley, then we'll go to member Higgins.
So we heard a lot of comments from parents about the current traffic situation at Eagle River Elementary. And um there are concerns that a lot of, an additional number of parents dropping off students there wouldn't work. Have you guys examined that issue at all?
I was there just a couple of weeks ago because I wanted to be there first thing in the morning to see what it was like. It's possible that that it was an aberration day. We can certainly have people look at it again. I mean, a lot of these kids are going to be coming in on bus. Um, but there's always parents who drive. I I can make sure we've relooked that and put something in BC.
Yeah, the representation to me was that traffic backs up all the way up into the main roads and it's dangerous. So I I haven't been to that specific school at that specific time either.
You know, it was seven-thirty in the morning, so it was half an hour before school started, so that I may have picked the wrong time. I I I'll talk to the team.
Any other follow-ups, member Donley? Good, thank you. Member Higgins, any additional questions?
I think the follow-up meeting will give us a chance to clear up any other issues, and I think that's probably the best way to do it.
Okay. Um, I just have one last one and then a comment. Um, has has district administration considered co-locating either um two charter programs in one building made available through right sizing or a charter and a neighborhood school?
We, we have actually talked about it before. We talked about, um, well, the names don't matter. Um, the last time we tried to close schools, and ultimately, both of those schools decided that they really wanted their own building. Of course, um, they didn't both get their own building. So it it could very well be that it's worth going back to them, looking at space available, even if there was minor construction costs for office spaces or whatever it's, I think it's worth looking at.
I'll just say, um, for transparency purposes and and things that I'm thinking about, I I wonder if um some combination of Stream Academy, the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, Highland Academy, um, there there is a bit of overlap there in grade serve, but there might be some synergy um in joining two programs um in one building if there's capacity. Um, the other other question I have to that end, I guess, is um if there were space in the education center here uh via Highland Academy um not being in the building, are there challenges apart from some capital needs with locating um Whaley School in that space? That's a question I didn't submit ahead of time, so if we don't know, um, but it, fair enough. Yeah, I'll I'll throw that out there and and maybe follow up, have a follow-up conversation with administration. Something I'm flagging, um, I think we covered this regarding this concerns about Tudor Elementary. Um, I disagree. I think there was an op-ed in the paper that addressed our students at Whaley is um, I, in a term I don't agree with. But um there there was concern from the neighborhood about placing a specialized school that wasn't available to neighborhood students in that um corner of the community, which is an understandable concern. With that said, it occurs to me that that placing that specialized program in a building where there's already so many resources enclosed to district administration provides some synergy potentially. Um, but I'm curious if we've already explored that opportunity. Um, and would be glad to connect with administration offline about it. Um, with that said, the last comment I had, um, I don't necessarily need an answer to it, but I I did want to give administration, um, Dr. Bryant and everyone uh involved, um, and I know MJ was involved too. Um, the team kudos regarding the community work sessions and conversations. Um, they were um inclusive. I saw that there was a language assistance available um for those who who needed translation services and and other supports. And so I just wanted to to thank the team for for making those approachable, uh, for those who could take time to attend. I I recognize that there were some who um unfortunately weren't able to attend due to other commitments, but that it was great work, and so thank you. With that said, it is five oh three. We still have additional time if there are other board members who have questions or comments. Okay. I don't see any, and so at this time, we're going to, I'm going to adjourn our work session at five oh four PM, and we'll gavel in for a regular session at six. Thank you.